Okay, we'll call the committee to order, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine tenements of our own.
Good evening, everyone. We will start with presentations and awards. And I know on our agenda, we have 1.1, which is for Mr. Amrashid Butar, but unfortunately, he's not able to be here with us tonight, so we will try to schedule that for another evening. So we will move right on to 1.2, the Fall 2014 Team of the Season. Dr. Conway.
I'd like to introduce our athletic director, Dr. Lois Passell. She thinks very hard when she mentions a team for Team of the Season, and I think does it for all the right reasons. And so we're very, very proud of the team that has come before us this evening. Dr. Passell, turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have the boys' football team come up with them? These are obviously just some of our players. Some of our players have basketball practice tonight, hockey practice, things like that. But we have a fairly good group here for you tonight, and certainly a very representative group of some of our hardest-working players. We had a new coaching staff this year. It was led by head coach A.J. Taddio. We had three paid assistant coaches. One of them is here tonight, Dennis Camp. And we were very fortunate to have four volunteer coaches as well that did an outstanding job. Trevor Williams over there, Tim Wilson, and James Hickman. And so we're very grateful to all of them. And right from the start, they came in and immediately placed much higher demands on our players in terms of their time, in terms of academic standards, behavioral standards, and their character. And truthfully, we lost some players along the way because of that, and we had some people complain that we were being too hard and too demanding. But we knew that was the price we were going to have to pay to turn this program around and to instill a greater commitment and character in our team. So we started the season undermanned in terms of numbers, and then it just got worse from there because we had injury after injury after injury. In the very first series, at the very first game against E.O. Smith, our starting quarterback broke his collarbone, and he was out for the season, and it just kind of went from there. Some of our top, top players, Matt Miller, Zach Graves, ended up having season-ending injuries, so it made it tough for us. On top of that, our line was terribly undersized, I would say, for Elijah was going up against kids that were probably outweighing him by 50 to 100 pounds, three to four inches taller. We played a lot of sophomores and even some freshmen on the varsity, which is kind of unheard of, but we needed to call those kids into duty as well just because of our numbers and kind of where we were with injuries. And yet, you know, through all of that, we fought. From the very first game when we played E.O. Smith, they were shocked that we were in the game only down one touchdown going deep into the fourth quarter. We took Platte to three overtimes before losing. What? Oh, Plainfield, sorry. Three overtimes before Plainfield. Yeah, Platte, that's pretty good. Three overtimes before we lost to them. We broke an 18-game losing streak by beating Weaver. So we had certainly some moments where we played just really, really hard and really, really well in some games, and really hung in there until the very, very end. But we make no excuses. None of us are happy with the record that we had this year. We were 1-9. None of us think that's good enough. It's not acceptable to me. It's not acceptable to the coach. I know it's not acceptable to these guys. But we had to start somewhere, and certainly, you know, again, we make no excuses for where we were. These boys never hung their heads. They never complained. They always played hard, clean football. Standing on the sidelines, you could see the difference in their attitudes, effort, and character. It was really unmistakable. Boys who had never made the commitment, who had never behaved well enough, who had never gotten the grades good enough to play, played this year for these coaches, and they lasted on the team the entire year. And regardless of the score, these boys played as hard on the last down of the game as they did on the first down of the game. Other coaches and officials recognized this. It wasn't just me noting this, so much so that the Central Connecticut Association of Football officials awarded this team their 2015 sportsmanship award, which was presented to Coach Taddio and his captains, seniors Matt Miller and Devon Gilnight, juniors Zachary Graves and Vito Marciano, at a dinner at the AquaTurf Club last week. Hard work, accountability, intelligence, character. The culture change will take time, but the foundation has been set, and we are extremely proud of this group of boys. Zachary is holding the trophy that they got for their sportsmanship award. I'm going to read all your names, even though a lot of the kids aren't here, just so you can hear who our guys were, and then if it's okay, I'll maybe the ones that are here. Jose Perez, Matthew Miller, Devon Gilnight, Elijah King, Cody Morgan, DeAndre Perez, Devon Berry, Joey Maddox, Danny Capcunos, Zachary Graves, Jacob Mullens, Jake Wilson, Tommy Orlowsky, Chris Wheeler. I can't call him Cameron. We know him by Vito Marciano. And then Josh Foster, Jacob Krupa, Mark Henry, Zachary Banning, Vinny Torres, Tyler Allen, Kenny Zheng, Malik Tate, Arshdeep Singh, Austin Devine, Jeremy Bedoya, Ryan Main, Camden Eilerman, Jacob Rogirio, Julius Priester, Robert Tierney, Troy Zedanis, Jonathan St. Germain, Justin Orlowsky, Kevin Smith, William Haley, Zachary Woods, Jonathan Gomez, Benjamin Kuka, Zachary Sargent, Alex Loomis, and Romeo Soa. Oh, yeah. All right, we got them. Okay, Durant Torres. So again, a lot of these boys aren't here tonight. I know they had other things. The number one player on our basketball team, they have practice tonight, but I didn't want you to read all their names to you, just to let you know who was on the team. And the coaches, tremendous job is our first-year head coach, A.J. Taddio. Chris Curry is one of our assistants. Dennis Camp, who also works at Loveland Hill School, so we see him a lot, which is great. Did a terrific job for us this year. Ryan McHugh, oh, I'm supposed to give that to you, sorry. Trevor Williams. These guys are so committed. And again, these were our volunteer coaches. James Hickman, Jeff Berry, who's not here, and Tim Wilson. So again, I can't tell you how hard it was for them to do what they did, and the key fighting the whole year despite, I mean, how many, I don't know how many guys were even suiting at the end. It was a small number because of all the injuries and things that happened. But again, if you could see just the fight in these guys, again, from the first down to the very last down of the game, never took their helmets off on the sideline, never threw any cheap shots at the other guys. We often would be in the games, and other teams would be getting unsportsmanlike conduct penalties, but we were not, and we had a lot we could have been sour about because we were going to be beat most games. But these guys never did any of that, and it was a testament to their coaches and to they are as young men. So the boys' football team.
Thank you all. Congratulations. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you for all your hard work, and we wish all of you happy holidays, because I'm sure you're all going to be happy. Thank you. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to item 2.0, the consent agenda. Mr. Wood.
Motion, Wood, consent agenda.
Is there a second? Mrs. Bush, second. Would anyone like to pull anything on Mr. Kemp?
Item A.
Anything else? Okay. All those in favor of item B and C? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? All right, then, motion carries on B and C. Now, Mr. Kemp.
Just like to bring your attention to page seven. It's item 6.6. And on the bottom line, there's a sentence that refers to the Cabe Award to the Vernon Board of Education. It said, "This is the third year." Actually, this is the ninth time that the Vernon Board has been awarded this leadership award by the Connecticut Association. So if we can change the third to the ninth, please.
Are there any other changes to the minutes? Okay. Motion to the table.
It's a motion.
Okay. Is there a second, Mr. Wood?
It's a second motion.
Okay, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Any extensions? This is our motion carries. Okay. Thank you. We will move on to item 3.0, secretary's report. Opportunity for Board of Education to add or delete agenda items. Mr. Wood.
I'd like to add the proposed agenda item that's in your packet this evening, approval of revised Board of Education mandate dated September 22nd at 9:05 under General Business.
Is there a second? Mrs. Bush.
It's a second motion.
Okay, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Any extensions? This is our motion carries. Okay. Thank you. We will move on to item 3.0, secretary's report. Opportunity for Board of Education to add or delete agenda items. Mr. Wood.
I'd like to add the proposed agenda item that's in your packet this evening, approval of revised Board of Education mandate dated September 22nd at 9:05 under General Business.
Is there a second? Mrs. Bush.
It's a second motion.
Okay, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Any extensions? This is our motion carries. Okay. Thank you. We will move on to item 3.0, secretary's report. Opportunity for Board of Education to add or delete agenda items. Mr. Wood.
I'd like to add the proposed agenda item that's in your packet this evening, approval of revised Board of Education mandate dated September 22nd at 9:05 under General Business.
Is there a second? Mrs. Bush.
It's a second motion.
Okay, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Any questions or comments? Discussion? All those in favor of adding that as the agenda item 5.5? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, now move on to item 3.2. Rocket, is this Mr. Johnson? Is there any?
Good evening. Today, I just have two things to talk about. This Friday, or last Friday and Saturday, the R.I.G.S. Roundtable put on their play Seed Folds, which although did not have a big turnout, I thought it was done very well with some outstanding performances by Aaron Gahue, Sam Gahue, Nick Bartos, and Deonco Grino. But that's not to say the rest of the cast didn't also do very well. The tech crew and stage design should also be commended. They did a very good job with what they had, and I thought it was altogether run better than plays of them in the past. And I thought it, I thought it went very well, and it was generally received well amongst people that went to go see it. And just, I had a comment about winter sports that have been happening, I noticed. We have a significant increase in people joining winter sports this year, with track increasing from four people last year to, I think, 10 or 12 this year. And wrestling, we went from like 13 people to, I think we have 19 or 20 now. So school participation in sports is going up, so that's always a positive thing, see people trying to get involved. But other than that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for you? Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to item 4.0, community forum. Opportunity for comments on agenda items, potential future agenda items, or general information provided to the board from citizens and community organizations. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board this evening? Okay. And then we'll move on to item 5.0, General Business, 5.1, Technology Committee Report. Dr. Passell.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. The technology, the board's technology committee met earlier this evening, so I'm sure they have some input on this agenda item, to review the five-year technology replacement plan for the Vernon Public Schools developed by Mr. Robert Seegan, who is the technology director or IT director for the town of Vernon, and the town of Vernon takes care of data processing for the entire town, including the school system. Mr. Seegan pulled together using our WASP inventory system and went over that. It's not perfect, the WASP inventory system, but it did give us a lot of information about what we had. His staff then went to each school for an eyes-on to double-check the information, and so the information you have, as he has put in his executive summary, it could be up to 15% off, which is upwards of 300 computers off and on, but it is, it's as near as we can get at this point with over 2,000 computers in the, in the school system. So some of the computers are waiting to be disposed of, and they are still on our inventory. And then there's a smaller percentage of computers that sometimes teachers bring in a computer, so if they have a desktop and they need a laptop, they bring in their own, and so that might have been an eyes-on computer and not be entered into our computer system. So those are the error for margin. I'd like to ask Mr. Seegan if he'd come up to the table, then I would be able to answer any questions you might have. But if you turn, he had an executive summary, and he certainly can answer any questions about that. The real plan is a one-pager. It's the page right after that. And as you see, the three pie charts on the top show the age of the computers that we have right now. So one section is desktops and laptops, another is Chromebooks and iPads, and then the third is our computer lab equipment, because we certainly don't want to forget that. On the left-hand side, the three grids, there's spreadsheets going down, that shows the exact numbers and the type of laptop. So a teacher desktop, faculty desktop, faculty would be staff who are not teaching. It could be a secretary, it could be a, it could be a guidance counselor, but it's workers for us who are not in the classroom. So you can see that. The next grid going down is the Chromebook and iPad, and you can see the age and what type of machine. And then the last is the computer lab equipment. So you can see, such as in the top, the desktops, student desktops, we have 137 of them that are over, that are eight and over years of age. On the right-hand side, you can see the five-year replacement plan that Mr. Seegan developed specifically for that. Notice in the top grid, teacher desktops, we are moving from desktops to laptops because of that portability, and so there are no replacements for teacher desktops. They are all down in teacher laptops. But I don't know if you want to add anything else to this, or just answer questions? It's up to you.
Just answer questions. Ken, I think this is our first attempt to get some visibility in what the Vernon Public Schools district has. So I think this is, you know, good inventory, and we're certainly chewing up the inventory over this next year, but we have a plan in place, and this is our approach. We'd certainly like to get it all at once, but we're not, you know, we've got to break it down into little chunks and attack this a little bit at a time.
Does anybody have any questions? Mrs. Aron.
I wonder why you're recommending, I wonder why you're recommending putting one into student desktops.
Not all classrooms need to have a laptop or portability. Business classes, for instance, it's desktop, it stays in one place, it's wired directly, you don't need to move that along, class.
Any questions? Mr. Wood.
Do we have any supportability issues with the machines that are in the six or seven, eight years?
We have layup support issues with most machines. Anything six, eight years old, we're basically stealing parts from older machines just to keep them running. You know, application support, any new applications, very tough to get on these older machines. They are most likely not supported if you're putting a new application on these machines.
Yeah, I was really thinking like operating system, and I kind of imagine they're running older operating systems and not supporting new stuff.
Correct. We probably have about 300 machines running XP currently, so.
XP's not supported?
Correct.
Any other questions? Mr. Kemp.
Regarding the Chromebooks, there was a conversation a year or so ago about who might be the owners of the Chromebooks, and I thought the idea was to put the Chromebooks in the possession of ownership in the student's hands. Is that still a case, or are we phasing in some phase of that?
I think for the most part, the Chromebooks are in students' hands.
Yes, I'm sorry, that one?
They are, in students' hands. Not a one-to-one initiative, but they're being used for whether it's test back testing or some other initiative going around the schools.
Okay. If the students are owning the Chromebooks, then?
They are not owning the products.
I didn't understand you correctly.
There is not a one-to-one initiative currently, so meaning it's not a one-per-one, the device per student?
Okay.
So they are spread out throughout the district. Again, there's only 500 Chromebooks, and you've got a couple thousand-plus students, so we're well short of that, you know, one-to-one initiative with that ratio.
Is there a plan to put Chromebooks in the hands of freshmen, or as opposed to other grades, or is there a plan?
I defer that to Dr. Conway.
Well, is there a plan to have the students in fact own the computer, the Chromebooks, or not?
Again, I defer that to Dr. Conway.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. I know Mr. Rocket is very much in favor of a one-to-one technology program. We've discussed over the past few years, a bring-your-own device, and then we would provide devices students could sign out if they don't have a device of their own. We've also discussed the merits of one device, such as a Chromebook, so that all the students would have the same exact platform, and we would be able to support them in a different way. We're at the very beginning of investigating that. My concern right now is still in improving the rigor of instruction or the rigor of learning and learning tasks at the high school. So we know we have a responsibility to ensure that our students have access to technology and are learning how to use technology in order to learn and to work, because that's the real world. But that hasn't come to the technology committee nor before the board, and that would certainly be a board decision, because it would be an investment in the Chromebooks. Chromebooks used to have a life of three years. I've heard that we're now pushing it out to four and five years. So it is possible to give freshmen a Chromebook freshman year and expect it to last the four years, and have them buy it out at the end of those four years. That's just one idea. We don't know, you know, where exactly we're going to recommend yet, and so the technology committee will be speaking of that. Mr. Rocket is very passionate about a one-to-one program, so I'm sure that the technology committee will be hearing about that before the year is out.
Well, I don't need to know the final decision tonight, and none of us do really. I kind of, I was going to ask some follow-on questions, because I thought we were going to put them in the hands of students, and they would be owning them. I reflect on some conversations that indicated that the kids take much better care of them when they in fact own them, or think they do, but in fact, when they're given to them, they will do a better job of taking care of them. Anyway, so since that's not the case, I'd just like to have the technology committee discuss that option, and let us know what their decisions are about ownership and how that might be evolving if they make that decision.
Mrs. Aron.
So the one thing that I did want to make clear, because there was a lot of discussion on this, and I have my own personal opinion about it. First of all, we haven't had a five-year plan, so it's excellent, but we have a five-year plan. This isn't a criticism of the five-year plan, because you are operating under the guidelines you are operating under. I do want everyone to understand, though, that we will continue to have eight-plus-year-old equipment in the environment for the next three to four years based on this five-year replacement plan, because by the time you filter down through those columns every year, everything ages a year, and it's going to take that long to get rid of it. So I know that there are discussions about, you know, the usability of the classroom, and I don't pretend to be an expert on it. I just want everybody to understand that we may hear the refrain from parents or teachers for years to come that they've got ancient computers in their classroom, and it's going to be true, so.
Mrs. Aron. Can you help me understand why there's no, in your five-year plan, is the fifth year that you're proposing Chromebooks? Purchase, purchase of Chromebooks? It's not until?
If you're looking at the Chromebook plan, yes, it'd be in the fifth year, because we just currently purchased, you know, 500 Chromebooks this last year. So it's going to take until that cycle to be replaced.
According to the graph, we have Chromebooks that are anywhere from zero to three years old.
Zero to one-year-old for the VTS Chromebooks, if you look at the second item page on the left.
I'm sorry. I was looking at the, I was looking at the pie chart then.
Oh, okay.
So is that how we, we don't make a purchase for five years, and that's how we, we're not getting, we're not getting anywhere with that?
Yeah, I'm not saying we're not going to make a purchase in five years. This plan was to look at our current equipment and what do we do to replace it. So this is not the additional equipment we're going to be purchasing over the next five years, which certainly will be introducing new technologies, new equipment as the years go on, but this is what we currently have in place and how we're going to move forward with our current equipment.
So it doesn't account for other purchases? This is?
It does not.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Bush.
Just to, just to comment that as new technology comes in, possibly Chromebooks might not be what we would want to replace that with. This is just a plan in place for what is what we have now technology-wise, and where we see us going in five years. It's, it's not that we're going to definitely purchase Chromebooks in five years. We're just going to, that will be replaced with whatever is the state-of-the-art out there at that point in time. So this plan is, there will be change in it, and there, this has to be a fluid plan as well, because of technology not just sitting still, it's always changing. But this is what it looks like as of right now.
Based on what Mrs. Bush said, is there a plan to replace them with different equipment?
I wish I could tell you what the future holds. But yeah, three years from now, who knows what we'll be replacing with? It could be Surface Pros. So we have to, we can anticipate it right now. Again, this is what we have now, so it gave us some visibility into what we do have. So we'll have to see what the future holds.
And based on what you said about, did you say you ordered 500?
We already currently own them, yes.
Yes. These are the newer ones?
Yes.
But you still have the eight-year?
We still have eight-year-old equipment in desktops and laptops, yes.
Right, right, okay. So you think that will be sufficient enough for the 1,000-plus students?
go on. But this is what we currently have in place, and how we're going to move forward with our current equipment.
So it doesn't account for other purchases?
It does not.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just to comment that as new technology comes in, possibly Chromebooks might not be what we would want to replace that with. This is just a plan in place for what is what we have now technology-wise, and where we see us going in five years. It's not that we're going to definitely purchase Chromebooks in five years, we're just going to, that will be replaced with whatever is the state-of-the-art out there at that point in time. So this plan is, there will be change in it, and this has to be a fluid plan as well, because of technology not just sitting still, it's always changing. But this is what it looks like as of right now.
Based on what Mrs. Bush said, is there a plan to replace them with different equipment?
I wish I could tell you what the future holds. But yeah, three years from now, who knows what we'll be replacing with? It could be Surface Pro's. So we have to, again, anticipate it right now. Again, this is what we have now, so it gave us some visibility into what we do have. So we'll have to see what the future holds.
And based on what you said about, did you say you ordered 500?
We already currently own them, yes.
Yes, these are the newer ones?
Yes.
But you still have the eight-year?
We still have eight-year-old equipment in desktops and laptops, yes.
Right, okay. So you think that will be sufficient enough for the thousand-plus students?
Well, the plan is to replace them, so again, as it was stated, you know, we will have some equipment that's six-years-old next year, and the year after that, we'll have some equipment that's five-years-old, but we'll eventually catch up and have a plan in place.
But when you replace it, I'm not clear, what are you replacing them with?
Well, that's a good question. Currently, we're going to replace them with desktops or laptops, whatever the current model is.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
This plan just gives us a way to budget each year, too, for, it's quite a bit of money, $200,000 or $300,000 in certain years, but at least gives us an idea of where to go when we're doing our budget. So, anything else? Thank you so much.
The mayor has allowed us to present, the town council had asked for a five-year plan, and so he has asked that we wait until their first meeting in January, which will be January 6th. So I've asked the Technology Committee if anyone's available, if they would like to come, and Mr. Seega and I will be there on the 6th as well.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Seega, very much. Step in the right direction. We will move on to item 5.2, Alliance District Grant Positions. Mrs. Seega, Dr. Conway.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. We have, these happen to be all the Alliance District positions, and so obviously the lowest in priority are the 17, 18 budget at that point. So we've included them all. Our highest, obviously, the very first priority is to finish funding all-day kindergarten through the local budget. And so that's why I left that in a separate section up at the top. The Board had already made that a priority. These are the last two and a half teachers to go in to the budget, and that's what those teachers actually are budgeted for through the grant, so that would be $167,000. That actually is in the version of the budget that exists today, one of the earliest versions. So for the Board's estimate of expenditures for 2015-16, or FY16, you can see that the first thing that we truly felt was important was to ensure that our students come to the table ready to learn. And so all of those pieces, this is one of the first things we purchased with the Alliance Grant, the pieces of the psychologist and the social workers, and the truancy residency person, making sure the kids are in school, those were very, very key positions. And so that is a, that's a top priority, because obviously if we can't get them to the table and make sure they're ready to learn when they're here, then we can't get them to learn. The other priority is the academic coaches, there are three, and we would put one in year one and two others in year two, to move those to the normal budget, to the local budget as well. Our second priority for year FY17 is really academics. And so we have two mathematics interventionists right now, one at the high school, and one that is going back and forth between Skinner and, excuse me, between Northeast and Maple. And we also have a reading interventionist at Northeast School. And so those three items would be very, very key. They're funded 100%. These are, mathematics intervention has been something people have been screaming for since I've been here, so I'm sure it's been before that. And so we felt that that was a secondary priority. And adding to that, we'd be the two other academic coaches, to make sure that our academics, our climate was up to speed, that our teachers are learning new strategies and are implementing the curriculum. Also in that year, which I did not put down, because these were all positions, was our new testing, NWEA MAP, the Measure of Academic Progress, and that would be about $36,000 that year. We, of course, still do have two years of the grant. I'm assuming, I do not know, but I'm assuming we're going to be flat-funded. So it'll be just over $2 million that we will receive in FY16 and FY17 in each of those years. I do not know, again, that's my assumption. I have not heard that they're going to add to it, but I've also not heard that they're going to subtract from it as well. FY18 is the last year of the budget. You can see operations, and those words in the left-hand column, those are the states' words, they have four buckets. The buckets are climate, academics, talent, and operations. And so that's why we use those words, because that's how we had to categorize. If you recall, the Board asked us to provide common planning time for all of our teachers. And so just over a year ago, we included pieces of our specialized, our special teachers, art and music, so that we could make sure that all of our elementary staff had common planning time. Our middle school staff does have common planning time with the team time that they use. And our high school, the high school is trying to work on that, and they provide some common planning time, but it certainly is not cohesive. So we've got those, art and music, and then the two reading, or actually 2.5 reading recovery teachers. Those positions, those are very, very expensive positions. However, the results are absolutely phenomenal. So those teachers generally work with a small group of students over the course of an entire year. In most cases, they are able to graduate more or less, a couple of kids at some point during the year and take on a few other kids. But I would say 10 is probably the maximum that these teachers work with over the course of an entire year. It changes their lives. These students are, they're first graders, all of them, they then read on grade level, and our data shows that they have not slid back. So we have gone from marginal readers struggling to students who are reading on grade level and are able to keep up with their studies. So it is a phenomenal program. It costs an entire teacher, it costs over $7,000 for the original training, and then extra training every single summer. So as I said, it's a very expensive program, but it does pay off beautifully. So we did put it on the list, but in year three, so that that could be a conversation for that time. Let's look at more data and see if that's something the Board wishes to put in the regular budget. And then finally, we have the assistant principal at Center Road School and the behavior coach. The assistant principal at Center Road School, of course, allows the principal to get into classrooms, our evaluation has changed. So that will also be a discussion in three years, we don't want to give that up at this point. But it will be very difficult for the principal to conduct evaluations, go into classrooms, go into grade-level meetings, et cetera, unless there's somebody else there to assist in that building. But that's a conversation, as I said, for really two years from now, that, because who knows what will happen with our population, with all kinds of things, so we certainly didn't want to commit. So FY16 and FY17 are two areas that we feel very strongly about. We are going to, right now, in the draft of the budget, we do have those for FY16, we do have those in the budget. I think Mr. Picaro almost had apoplexy when I put those in, but they are right now in the first draft of the budget. And so if you have any questions, Mr. Burt knows these positions as well as I do, so does Mrs. Buell, and any money questions, I'm sure Mr. Picaro can answer. I'll turn it back to you, Mrs. Fisher.
Anybody have any questions? Mrs. Arne?
I think Mr. Picaro wasn't the only one who's going to suffer with apoplexy. I think the issue I had when you were allocating Alliance money was this exact thing, that you've made commitments to personnel rather than durable goods. And that $219,000 on top of the all-day kindergarten really gives me a lot of trouble. Now we're facing, we're facing what the Board actively discussed, where to put that money, and making commitment to people, I think, in my opinion, at that time, and still is not the way we should have spent the money, because now we have to do exactly what we find distasteful, either funding that dollar amount or eliminating those positions.
Mr. Kim?
Michelle, I'm not sure exactly what you're saying. Do you feel that we, the Board should be backing away from our commitment to all-day kindergarten, or maybe just be clear of what you're trying to say? I don't understand it.
We're certainly not backing off of all-day kindergarten. I think the dollars that we put into support staff and teachers and all Alliance dollars is now coming back to bite us, David. That, I believed then, and I still believe, that we should have spent that money on more durable goods and less personnel, because this is what happens. We're being asked to assume salaries that the Alliance money was paying for. I'm not talking about all-day kindergarten, we made a commitment to that. But the $219,000 that was Alliance money that's now going to be shifted to the Board budget is very troubling to me.
Now, these are positions that we, during our budget process, could decide whether we keep them or not, to be correct?
Absolutely. This is our wishlist, and certainly we did without all of these positions, Mrs. Fisher, before the Alliance Grant. So I still feel very strong about all-day kindergarten, and I'm delighted the Board put that in. But I think our expectations are that the Board is going to discuss this and make a decision, and not this evening, but throughout the budget process, and decide where to put our A's.
So at the end of fiscal year 17, that's our last yearly Alliance grant, is that correct?
That is correct.
Anybody else have any questions?
If I may add, I did approach the Executive Director of the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents with my question. We are one of the smaller districts who are receiving Alliance District funding, and I said to him that we are in the process of looking at sustainability for some of these positions that we feel are hitting the mark. And I asked if he knew what was going to happen, or if he could find out what was going to happen in terms of two years from now. Is, are we all going to fall off the funding cliff? And we get just over $2 million, I can assure you, Meriden gets many, many times that, and so do other districts. So Meriden, for instance, has, from year one, purchased seven assistant principals for their elementary schools. At this point, there is no plan in place to move those to the local budget. And so that's my question, is are we the only ones who are concerned about this? Does someone else have information, we don't? And so my understanding from my question to Dr. Sarasolo was that he does not believe anyone has any other information. I said, okay, so he is going to try through his channels to get some sort of feedback. This was the Governor's plan, along with the Commissioner, and this Governor will be here when we all fall off the funding cliff. So I'm hoping to have more information as time goes on. I don't know what would happen, but you recall, our ECS has not gone up in these three years in the town, whereas other towns have gone up, I think a 2%, or so, I can't remember, is it two each year? They've actually received more in ECS, Vernon has not, nor has Meriden, Waterbury, Hartford, et cetera, in ECS. And so certainly, I know the town would expect at the end of the five years to receive whatever percent they didn't get over these five years, and I agree too. So we're not sure what's going to happen. We're trying to be thoughtful and deliberative and responsible, but we're also, I'm crossing my fingers, I'm very hopeful that we'll get some indication of what the Governor plans to do in three years.
Mr. Stansfield?
So my real concern is that before we've even started talking about the 2015-2016 budget, tonight alone, we've added $600,000 to it. And that's just in two items, between the technology and this. Given the climate lately in the budget talks, I will be very curious to see where that money's coming from, or how we're arriving at that number. Thanks.
Would it be appropriate to consider, when you're submitting your Alliance funding expenditures, to start backing away from personnel, and to not put us in this position, and to do more in other ways rather than people?
Back through the chair. This year, we did not purchase any people in year three. We did, year one was almost 100% people, year two was probably 90% people, and we knew that was all, that was as far as we could go. There was no way we were even going to be able to support them. We know this is not a feasible list, but we did prioritize it and say, this would be good for Vernon, for our kids, to do what we've asked to do, at least in the first two years. But, where's I go? But in year three, this is the year we purchased level readers, the new assessment system, Aspen, or Aspen was last year, I think, or Aspen was this year. So there are lots and lots of things, we had technology, wireless at the middle school, all of those, a smart board for all the elementary classrooms. So that's what we were doing this year, and that's the plan. The next two, we will certainly not add any staff. Could we subtract it? Absolutely. We were hoping to subtract some as we, you know, as we go along. The concerns are where we would subtract, unless we were moving them into the local budget, where we would subtract, of course, would be at the least priority for us. And so if we can have some of these services, such as reading recovery, even though we're going to stop it in three years, why not do that rather than just not do it? And so that would be my concern about taking those positions out at this point, unless they were going to the local budget by priority. Did you understand that last?
And a different way of thinking might be, instead of investing $60,000 per teacher to impact 10 students, maybe the money, not that that's not a good thing, but maybe that money would be better spent where it impacts more students for a longer period of time. So eliminating personnel off of this list before we have to, to me, makes more sense, and replacing it with durable goods, so that we can do less of this as time goes on. I would be hard-pressed. I know it's your wishlist, but I would be hard-pressed to support that. I don't think our budget, our town will support that. So if you can do some damage control and reduce positions and replace it with long-lasting items, I think you would be doing everybody a favor.
Now, I know the benefit of a reading recovery program, and I understand that it only benefits a small amount of children, but bringing that small amount of children up will only help our scores and everything for the future. Is it a possibility to transfer those into under Title I? I know reading recovery is something that is usually put in like a Title I situation, that part of the budget.
Through the chair. Our Title I budget is spent to the penny right now. We actually have mathematics interventionists and reading interventionists, and to Ms. Arne's point, they service a lot more children than reading recovery does, at a different level, certainly. But I would say that if teachers were asking, they would prefer the interventions. They know what reading recovery does, and they know that, but they're looking to serve a larger number of students than what reading recovery can do. So I understand that, but that's where our Title I dollars are going.
Are these dollars, do these dollars include benefits as well?
No, I just included the salaries, you were, but most of these people have salary. No, they don't. The partial ones were already in our budget, but the whole ones are not.
Some of these people, teachers here beforehand, anyway, but judging from our enrollment, we're going to have to lose some teachers if we were to come back to the classroom. Mrs. Arne?
Just for clarity-
Just for clarification, did the budgets prior to Alliance money support coaches, academic, were there any prior to academic?
We had five academic coaches prior to the Alliance district, but they were all funded with Education Jobs Fund, which was in President Obama's first term. He gave us funding starting in September and lasting for 19 months or so. And then this one, this grant came out right after that, and so we were able to move the funding from one to the other. So in our local budget, the answer is no, they were not in our local budget. They were here before Alliance, however, just funded by a different grant, a short-term grant.
So we would have had the benefit of academic coaches for how many years? When Alliance was in the, five years?
Oh, five during Alliance, and just over one, or just under one, actually, with the other, by the time we hired them and trained them and all of that. So it'll be six altogether.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. This will be rich conversation, general time. So we'll move on to item 5.3. Class size is an enrollment that we see less than we have.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Fisher. At the last meeting, we presented you with charts that looked very similar to this. A couple of questions were asked about courses that were combined, such as German student and German III. So we have removed those, may have ordered them as well. So on page one, up at the top, just for your information, CCE is College and Career Exploratory. And you'll see that throughout. So those are generally quarter credit or half-credit courses that run, just to let you know. Those are brand-new this year. Let's see, I misnumbered. I apologize for the blank sheet. That was in mine, there was a blank sheet. I don't know if it wasn't yours, the third one in. If you move to category two, which is on the fourth page, these are programs, are courses that are restricted in size, so baking can only have 10 to 15 students in a class. You're not supposed to have more than that. There's another CCE, College and Career Exploratory, and that's hospitality. You can see those going down, each department tried to put those in. But these are courses, so we took those out of the others, which by the board's, the board's policy, you have 15 to 25 at the secondary level is your class size. So this is slightly smaller. The next page, category three, are AP or ECE, Early College Experience courses. All of these for ECE are the UConn credit courses, and so students experiencing those will receive college credit at UConn. The AP courses, the students need to take an AP exam and score three or higher, three, four, or five, in order to receive college credit, that they have to then apply to the college to get that credit. So these courses are generally offered to juniors and seniors, and they're sometimes a little bit smaller. There's category four, our independent studies. Those are not teaching sections. Those students do work with teachers and meet with them, but we don't assign a teacher to those sections. Category five is the one that Mr. Hohl asked about last time, what ones are combined. So this page is set up a little bit differently, but you can see that the physics, early college experience, and honors courses are, meet at the same time. So under the total enrollment column, the 13 of one with the two of the other meet at the same time, and the 19 and the three meet at the same time. German I, college and honors, you can see that those 15 students meet at the same time. German II and III, college and honors, all of those students meet at the same time. There were nine of them, et cetera, going right down. So each shaded group meets together. About the sixth one from the bottom, Java Fundamentals and Office Apps, you can see that you've got one and 13 meeting together, and two and 17 meeting together. So the N is obviously a larger section. But that was, that was the one that was most requested last time, was can you remove those from the others? So the ones at the beginning of the packet are all singletons. They do not meet with two different courses. And category six was remedial or skills-based classes, possibly for individuals with disabilities. That's one.
Seven.
Seven.
Category seven.
I missed category seven. I apologize. Grad point. Grad point, these courses, thank you, are taken by students either in a study hall, or free period, or after school, or at home. They all do meet with Mr., hmm, that's awful. Dickinson, absolutely, thank you. With Mr. Dickinson. And Mr. Dickinson also works with the other teachers in the school, so he is in classrooms as well. But these are all students taking, they're like independent studies, but they touch base with Mr. Dickinson. That's one. Thank you, Mr. Kemp, sorry. So that was the information that was requested, and any questions?
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I still don't understand at all, and it will take some time to really figure this out. I suppose it really comes down to trying to understand numbers like three and four and six and two, and why they would, and if they are in a standalone class with a full-time teacher or not. And just looking at this doesn't really, at first glance, tell me the answer to that. So what I'm asking you is to help us understand a little better. Maybe we have to look at this again at another evening, where in category two, you might have combined classes and haven't. I'm just going to pick one. Hospitality Q1, there's a three and an eight.
That's correct. One class has three students, and one class has eight students.
Yeah, but what I mean is, are they active, are they meeting at the same time with the same teacher?
No. The only ones that meet at the same time is category five, that page.
Why, for heaven's sakes, are three and eight not combined? I just don't understand that. And there are other examples here, but that's the kind of thing that raises the question, not only of the board member, but the town councilor and the mayor, they would like to know why there are three kids in a classroom at all.
We agree with you, Mr. Kemp. That's why we're presenting you with this information. Actually, today, Mr. Burt and Mrs. Beal and I met individually with Mr. Harrison and Mr. Rocket, to see how we can be both fiscally responsible and educationally sound in our offerings here.
Well, besides combining them necessarily, if you only have a few number of students, let's say, I'll pick on woodworking two, and I have no agenda here for any one course, okay? I'm just trying to grab something that jumps out at me. Item four, I guess the next question is, then why offer it all? Okay? Now, I know you can't split a teacher right down the middle, and so on, that you already have, and you don't, you're kind of a slave to who signs up for what. I get that part. But nevertheless, there's so much of this three and four and two that it just cannot continue. There may be an aberration here, a scheduling problem there, but this is, this transcends the entire document, and we can't afford that. We're trying to justify other staff positions, and, you know, to us, this looks like an obvious answer. You know, if I had to vote on this right now, I would just, there's your answer. That's how you're going to have your Alliance people, and anything else we need, and the computers, and so on, because this just can't go on.
Mr. Hohl.
I think one of the things that you missed at the last session, Mr. Kemp, was the comments from Dr. Conway, that she's going to be bringing some proposals for during budget season, which are going to have staffing impacts. And at that time, this information is for us to understand why we're seeing those staffing impacts. I didn't hear her say that tonight, but you missed that at the last meeting, so I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Well, thank you, Hohl. I would hope that it would be more than staffing impact, because the idea isn't necessarily to eliminate someone's position, but it should also be program impact or course impact, okay? Whether or not we should be offering something. So we might be able to retain a person and use them more effectively elsewhere, if we are rethinking what we're offering, and why.
Mrs. Arne, true. Is that anticipated discussion going to take place during budget?
Yes. They would be, actually, our next meeting is the budget presentation, so the board's next meeting. So that's why we brought these to you at the last meeting. In this meeting, the first version was in your last packet. Mr. Hohl had asked us to pull out those smaller, the courses that are combined, so that was, that was a great idea. And that's why we brought this to you, to present the enrollment numbers to you during budget season, certainly will be in your backup information. But you need to have a full knowledge of what we're seeing, and the concerns that Mr. Burt, Mrs. Beal, and I have had in looking at these numbers since the beginning of September, knowing we could never present a budget to the board that contained classes with this size. And so I really, I wanted the board to see this, I wanted the board to digest it, and be ready for some questions. The presentation will be the 12th, and Mr. Harrison and Mr. Rocket will be here on the 14th for that budget, so they'll be together, actually.
So these kinds of numbers only exist in this, only exist this year?
Oh, no, I'm sure, I'm sure they didn't. I'm sure they didn't. We didn't have access to that. I don't know if Mr. Burt doesn't have anything with him, but we printed out of the old computer system, the old student software system, and the documents are probably 55, 60 pages long. It makes no sense, you can't organize it, you can't do anything with it, and so it was all smoke and mirrors. And that's why, as soon as Mr. Burt was able to get into the system when we were up and running at the beginning of September, he ran these numbers, and he came in to me, and he said, you've got to see this. And so we've been working on it since then. But this is, we have not, we have reduced some staff. I would say in the past eight years, I probably, at the high school, reduced by over 12 or 15 positions. But with our population decreasing, we have not decreased at the same rate, as the staff has not decreased at the same rate. And so we've got, and one thing that we kept looking at was our Algebra I, and I'll just be very frank, you look at Algebra I, which is the top of the second page, our average class size is 13.6. So tell me why we have a failure rate? Of anything.
No, you tell me.
Yeah, well, exactly, that's, and I would love to be able to tell you that. So that's extremely concerning, and with all of those classes that are smaller, with almost one to one, it should, we shouldn't do that. I'm sorry we're having a conversation here. I apologize. I apologize for that.
So these numbers are a surprise to you?
They were at the beginning. I knew that they were, there were smaller classes, but I had no idea that they were like this.
So who didn't know?
Pardon?
Who didn't know?
I would imagine the high school principal prior to Mr. Rocket, who was, you know, living there, and you see the classes, and you just go.
They just stay in the graveyard.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just a question. In category two, there's a listing for the job fundamentals S1 with one class and 11 people, but then that also appears, as we discussed, under category five, job fundamentals as part of the office application. So is that a mistake, or are they?
No, it's not. There are two sections.
Three.
Three sections, oh, right, three sections. So the students who are on category five probably could not fit it into their classes, the regular course of job fundamentals, which has 11 students, and they really wanted to take it. So I'm guessing they're juniors and seniors, one and two of the three students, and so they are in a freshman office applications class, taking that, so they're probably, you know, conversed with the teacher while students are working, and do a lot of it independently, but they're getting the same assignment as the teacher is giving the other, the full class, and they really wanted to take it.
Thank you. My second question is, does the high school still allow students to potentially audit classes if they can't fit it into their schedule? It happens sometimes where, you know, if they're in the LOF program, for instance, they can't attend all that five-day class, but maybe they can do three days out of the five, or things like that.
I don't think that happens anymore with block scheduling. I think that used to happen when you had a lab course that interrupted, but now all courses are two blocks.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to ask about the independent study. Could you clarify what the staff coverage is for independent study?
That would be, staff does not get paid extra for that. So if you are a senior and you're very interested in, so office applications, it could be someone, or video production is easy. I know, I'm pretty sure I know who that student is, who is just fascinated with the video production, wants to learn more, and is doing that on his own, probably after school, and in the evening, and meeting with the teacher on the fly, maybe once a week. So it's, these are students who really want creative writing, would be the same. The education, the office apps, we offer that class, so I'm not sure exactly, I don't know which student that is, but it could be someone who's, it's a requirement for graduation, so it could be a student who's come in as a junior and just needs that credit, and is taking it that way. But they meet with students, they meet with teachers as needed. They could meet with them every day, but then they'd probably be scheduled into the class, so I'm guessing it's mostly they meet with them as needed, because it's independent study.
All right, so there's no way that that constitutes a period, the teacher?
That's correct. That is correct. It is not.
All right.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. We'll discuss them again, I'm sure, during such a time. Okay, we'll move on to item 5.4, Finance Committee Report, 5.4A, Year-to-Day Report.
Good evening to you, Madam Chair and Board. I call your attention to Exhibit A, the Year-to-Day Budget Report. Overall, as we discussed this briefly in Finance Committee meeting prior to the State's Board meeting, there are little change from the last meeting. Overall, we are, we have expended $17.6 million of our $51.3 million appropriated budget, additional $27.3 million in encumbrances, leaving us with approximately $6.4 million. That reflects an 87.6% utilization rate. We are still showing negatives from the last report in our salary non-affiliated account, social worker account, temporary salaries account, but we're working internally to reconcile those salary accounts, and you will see them reconciled with budget transfers in our amendments for the next Finance Committee meeting. There are no other questions on that. I'd be glad to move on to the focus of our discussion, which is our draft feasibility study.
So do you have any other questions on the Year-to-Day Budget?
Yes, I just wanted to try and stay with you, Michael. Is it, the special ed accounts in total, there's plus, there's minus, but overall, what is your impression as to how we stand in those accounts, please?
Sure. Through the chair, and we discussed this briefly at the last Finance Committee meeting. We have received our preliminary revenue estimates from the State Department of Education, and at this point in time, we are a black couple issue, and it looks like we could be in the ballpark about $200,000 at this point, but again, very early in the year, so we have to see, you know, how things play out over the next few months. As you know, timing-wise, our next estimates will be coming from the State Department of Education in April, where we'll have a more precise estimate of where we are.
How is the new software, relatively new software program that we're using helping us with Medicare recovery?
Through the chair, I believe referring to our work with our vendor comp plan and recouping, maximizing our reimbursement expenses, reimbursable expenses for that. Very well. We are expecting an increase of about $25,000 to $30,000 over what we had brought in in revenue for the prior year, so it continues to go up. And I think Mrs. Beal and her staff are finding some creative ways to track more in more detail. For example, special education transportation is a big area. For example, special education transportation is a big area that's untapped at this point. And we are collecting that data in hopes of putting it in for reimbursement as well. So I think we're doing everything we can to collect as much data that we could use for reimbursement purposes that we can. And the vendor's been a big part of that. And there's been a lot of training and so forth to get us there.
Mr. Stansum.
Just to clarify, if we're tracking for $25,000 to $30,000 increase, what is the cost of the vendor? So are we actually getting $25,000 to $30,000 or are we paying some of that?
Through the chair, yes. We do pay on a sliding scale. So the incentive, which is one of the reasons why we went to this vendor versus our vendor from prior years, is the more money we bring in, the more they charge. And so the maximum at this point is 90%. And so obviously, they're trying to get the 9%, which helps us get the most of our money. And that... So that $25,000 includes their fee being removed from that.
Any other questions on the Year-to-Date Budget? Okay, we'll move on to item 4B.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Before you, Exhibit B is a draft feasibility study as directed by the Board of Education at a prior meeting. You will see from the way that the RFP is structured, this is a major undertaking. It is a draft study to determine the future structure of our school system. Specifically, it seeks an analysis and appraisal of several educational components, specifically student enrollment, educational programs, grade organization, reorganization, school facilities, and building capacities. And so by way of quick overview, as we discussed in the Finance Committee meeting, when we were putting this together, we did look at any other school districts that took on similar scopes of work. And overall, many of the school districts took slices of it, and very few are doing what we're doing, which is not a bad thing. It's actually, I think, a very comprehensive way of looking at our entire education system. But this is a major undertaking that looks at a very wide spectrum of educational components. And it'll be providing us with recommendations in each of those categories for change. Overall, the Finance Committee prior to this meeting discussed the dates for when this would be rolled out. And so I'd like to quickly review those with you and then talk specifically about the components and general requirements discussion that we had, which is at the end of the RFP. By way, again, of overview, the pre-bid conference for this RFP, assuming that we can put this RFP out this week, would be on January 7th. That would be a mandatory pre-bid conference. We felt that due to the comprehensive nature of this request for proposals and the technical specificity of it, we needed to have that pre-bid conference with any potential vendors and make it a mandatory requirement. The second major milestone date in this process would be on January 21st. That's the deadline for any questions in writing submitted to the business office related to this proposal. Answers to those questions by way of our normal bid process would be posted very transparently online for all vendors to see and for the public to see as well. The due date would be February 11th. And the award we anticipate through evaluation process with the scoring rubric in place by that date would be three weeks, three to four weeks from that date. So if everything were to go as planned and we were to release this RFP in the next week, we could see an award sometime in the beginning of March or second week, by the second week of March. The other major milestone dates is currently written in draft form, would be based on the payment schedule, and you'll see that in the payment section of this draft RFP. The first would be the data collection phase. Once the vendor collects all of the necessary data, the initial payment would be made. There is no date type to that. However, May 6th would be the second major milestone, which would be when the draft report would be due. And then the final product, the final report and presentation to the board, is currently written in as June 3rd. Then if I can call your attention to Section 4, Components and General Requirements. We specifically included this section in the RFP to really zero in on what the board was looking for and looking to get out of this request for proposal. And again, I believe we captured the majority of it in here, specifically in 4.2 through the questions A through F there. But this is really a section where if board members have specific needs, concerns, that they'd like to see addressed in this request for proposal, that we can certainly write them in. The bulk of the rest of the proposal is our standard, our new standard RFP template that we're using. So this is really the area of the request for proposal that we can customize further. And at that point, I'd be glad to take any questions or further discussion.
Mr. Stansum.
Through you, Madam Chair. Mr. Pacaro, I appreciate the aggressive dates, but I'm a little concerned about how aggressive they are. If you're saying we're not going to make the award until potentially the first week in March, then you're giving them essentially, you know, eight weeks to do the data gathering and have a preliminary report. Are we sure that's enough time, given the level of detail that we're asking for?
Through you, Madam Chair. Again, it's draft. We could certainly expand it if that's the board's wish. I came up with that timeframe by looking at some of the other proposals that were out there and basing on some of those timeframes. So we just did, you know, we did put some science to it. But, you know, again, this is meant for discussion and it's a starting point for us, and we can customize it further if the board wishes.
Can I just ask, so is that something when you have your pre-conference that you can talk to the vendors and see if that timeframe is feasible for them? Is that something you could cover at that meeting?
Yes. And we do, if folks are concerned about changing that, we do, as written in the current draft RFP, under our reserve rights section, we do have the ability to make some of those changes if we feel that's in the best interest of the board.
Mr. Ken.
Michael, I think that most of the document here is technically very correct, going on from item two through four. You know, I mean, you've included everything we could hope to have you include as far as process goes. But my concern is the scope of the project. And I don't think it... I have 1.2, and also in your summary, I have 4.2. You address several aspects of, I think, what the board was wanting to be considered, like reconfiguration and redistricting and population projections that the state or Dr. Prada might provide for us. But there's so much more to this. The future of our school system and where it might land sooner than later transcends so many other things that I just don't see a company in a pre-qualification meeting being able to get their arms around it. Yes, we could have the pre-conference, but it's not up to them to say... They'll say they can do it. You know, you could do that tomorrow. They'd say they could do it. But I'll give you a few examples. We have to understand what kind of housing units the town is going to be putting in place and where, whether they're condos or they're apartments, and not only in terms of sheer numbers, but are they elderly housing units? Are they housing units that would hold children? Are they... And where are they? Are they across the interstate? Are they this side of the interstate? Are they in Rockville? Where are they? That's one example. The whole impact of block scheduling, I don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other what configuration of block scheduling. There may or may not be, but there is... The potential of magnet school seats is really enormous. The magnet schools continue to construct newer seats, even newer than they had originally intended in some of the buildings that they're building, where they had planned on 400 seats. Now they're looking at 525. Collectively, there's 12 or 13 magnet schools, and they're all either opening or expanding their capacity. How is that going to be understood by this potential vendor? I just don't know. But some of it is known, some of it is not. We need to understand that. The potential for legislation, as it might impact Vernon Public Schools, is significant. We don't really know what the state is going to pass as far as legislation goes. And I'll give you an example. Early childhood, what are they going to expect us to do here? And what, if anything, might they do in open choice? Right now, that's a voluntary program. The state has guidelines to come up with 3% of the Hartford kids that they want to go to towns outside of Hartford. They don't expect it, they don't demand, require it of individual towns. If the legislature, with this new Chef O'Neil offshoot, I forgot the acronym, this new lawsuit that was going to go forward in January, and they're not going that fast. But anyway, if the legislation imposes upon the towns requirements for open choice placements, that would impact Vernon significantly. And I don't know what that outcome might be. There are tech ed placements currently at Cheney, at Wyndham Tech. And we were just understanding the other evening that we had many more than we realized, that they weren't being tracked by us and, I guess, the other institutions either. But in other words, what is our tech ed plan here? If the technical colleges are capable of taking... Excuse me, not colleges. Well, maybe them too. But if the technical schools are capable of offering programs that we're attempting to offer here, the question is, why are we doing it? When the kids might be better served at Cheney Tech or Wyndham Tech or wherever? I have no idea. But if we are going to look at this school system, what we offer and where, we need to understand that too. I might have missed something here. But the point is, this is much bigger than what some vendor might say yes to, you know, a week or two. And, I mean, I'd like to send this back to committee for much further consideration as to what we're asking a vendor to tell us. I mean, I just get several right here, but I don't think a vendor's going to be able to get their arms around that very quickly. And I don't want to base somebody and then have them say, "Well, you never asked us that." Right?
As far as bringing it back to committee, Mr. Kemp, I'm not sure how that would benefit us right now. I think this is a request for proposals, right? This is information that they're going to provide to us based on the questions that we ask in this pre-bid meeting, the conference. It is a very complex subject. And I don't think there's lots of vendors out there that can answer the questions. And I think we could write pages. But I think some of the discussion that is going to be held during the pre-bid conference is that information, those types of subject matter that you were just referencing, that understand, we don't know what we don't know. And there's a lot of things there that we won't know until legislation is actually passed, that we can't predict. But we want to try and position ourselves for what we do know now. And, you know, again, this is just a request for proposal to see where we go next. I don't think going back to committee would change that.
Can I piggyback on that too? Just some of the things you brought up, David, to me, come under A, which is the student enrollment projections, because that studying how many are going to go to band school, how many are going to go to tech ed placement will affect our enrollment. So to me, those things come under item A.
Well, I don't know what the vendor's interpretation of enrollment projections might consist of.
Well, that's what would be covered at the pre-conference that they would do in January.
Well, I've already put it on my calendar. I hope you were expecting me to be there, because I wouldn't miss this for the world. I mean, because in one short paragraph, you articulate what is a very brief introduction to the vendor. If I were the vendor, I would... I mean, this is only five lines, okay? I mean, it doesn't begin to address the scope of what I thought we were trying to get our arms around. I just don't see that happening in a pre-bid conference. I really don't.
Mrs. Aron.
I appreciate all the points you're making, Mr. Kemp. But I think if I go back to our original discussion and just keep it simple, stupid, we want to know if the buildings we have are being used efficiently. Do we have... Can we operate more efficiently? And all of the information used to make that decision is going to be based on somebody's best guess, based on data, but their best guess. And we had a lot of this done for us with that company a year ago, who came in and I don't remember the name, help me, Mr. Pacaro, who...
Futures.
Thank you. Yes. Who made recommendations about the things that we're doing and not doing and what we could be better at. So although I think all of your, you know, your points are valid, I'm going to politely suggest that maybe you're overthinking it. All we really need to know is, are we efficient? Could we be more efficient? And how could we be more efficient? All, you know, Dr. Prada and his forecasting was pretty poor, was no help to us. I hope that wouldn't be anything that we're considering. There's got to be other numbers out there. But our history is going to show that we've declined in population, and there's nothing to make us think that we're going to grow in population. So anyway. And then my other question is, we've already closed three buildings that I'm... Four buildings that I'm... The Polylog School and the kindergarten building at the top of Center Road, Sykes, Vernon Elementary and Sykes. And we survived it. And we didn't do it with this scientific method. We said, "Look, we got more building than kids, and we can't afford to do this, and we're not going to do it anymore." So to me, although I understand there's a need to have data as much as we can, I get that, and I think that's important, but we can't know everything. And to me, it will come down to some... To a simple recommendation. You're doing fine. Your building use is efficient or it's not. And recommendations to either use our buildings differently or use one less building or whatever. But I would hate to tie the hands of a company by too much overthinking. If they get the gist of it, if they know what we're looking for, then I would hate to tie their hands so we don't get the information or in the end, we don't get the recommendation that we're looking for.
Well, as you mentioned, we had the futures study that we did. And I don't know if we got everything out of it that we had wanted or hoped. What I don't want to happen, I kind of agree with Mr. Kemp in that way, that I want to make sure we are getting what we really want, instead of putting money into a study that we aren't getting all the information we want, that we have to set up another study for in the future. So I would... When I went through the timeline proposal, I'm a little concerned about its time, because here we are, we need to focus on the budget, we need to focus on, you know, all those things. Maybe we need to just slow it down a little bit and kind of reset up where we're going before we jump into something and make sure it's not really what we want in the long run.
Mr. Hove.
I come back to the fact that this is a request for proposals from companies that help people do this type of activity. This is not a proposal, what we're going to do. We're not paying anybody for these proposals. This is for them to come in and say, "These are the services we can provide to help you do the things that you want to investigate. This is how we approach it. This is the types of things you could get. This is our cost to do that." Once we have that information, then we make the decision, are we going to move forward with this proposal or are we not? And if we don't like any of the proposals that we get, we don't take any of them. We go back to the drawing board. I think we're all overthinking this. This is a request for proposals, eight weeks to put something together to tell us what you could do. And, you know, if you figure out eight weeks is like about 320 man-hours per person, that's a lot of time to put together a proposal. Again, just something to think about. I think we're overthinking this. Again, just something to think about, I think we're overthinking this.
Mr. Stansell.
I, so I kind of agree with what we're thinking, and the one thing I would say, though, is I agree with Mr. Kemp that we should consider looking and spiking out specifically, you know, I think item A, to give a little more detail, if we included things that we're looking for in there, instead of just, you know, make a guess on our enrollment, then we might be able to get a little more relevant data, like, you know, updated student enrollment projections for the next 10 years, including, you know, magnet schools, et cetera. Some way to phrase item A to be a little more comprehensive and a little less, you know, you could come at it five different ways, and each one would technically be correct. I agree that ultimately, we're going to make the decision on which one to go forward with, but I'd like to arm them with enough information about what we're actually looking for, so that what they propose is relevant to what we want.
Mr. Trump.
Is this going to incorporate any or any part of the BOAG operation?
Mr. Picaro.
Through the chair, yes, the entire system would be examined.
Yes?
Yes, sir.
Also, at our Finance Committee meeting, we did discuss the possibility of including our athletic fields and facilities in this RFP, and after much discussion, I'll let Mr. Holt summarize it for you.
I think what we came away with was that we should also put out a separate RFI, or the RFI we think we have to go for first, for information on what to do with the field so that when it comes time to putting together a plan, we have that, but it doesn't distract us from the use of buildings, because I think this is, as Mr. Kemp alluded to, there's a lot of different components to this to consider, and I think it's different experts that would provide information on how do you sporting fields and facilities versus how to use your instructional facilities. So I would make a recommendation that as a board, we ask administration to bring back, and I put it in the form of a motion, like just to make it official here, that we ask the administration to come out with a separate RFI for sports facilities.
Feasibility.
Feasibility, here we go.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion, comments on that motion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? And motion carries. Okay. Yes.
I just want to point out, according to the town's fiscal report, it's available, public information, the capacity of the buildings that we occupy are roughly 65% if we follow the state's formula. It's in the last page of the annual report. They use a very outdated formula, but it's what they use, and to each of our schools, if you read the town's published document, shows us that a very low percent of occupancy.
One other thing in our committee meeting, we did item D under 4.2, just changed the language a little bit on that, or the estimated cost and cost savings associated with each recommendation. In other words, if they recommended reconfiguration, what would the cost be to do that, and what would we save? So that's where we are. I think.
We see there's no motion required.
Oh, actually, there's. Mr. Holt.
I would move that we move forward with proceeding with the information, incorporating those items that we can that makes sense that Mr. Kemp proposed into the list of information that we're interested in finding. I think that's a rather easy tweak to this, and that we move forward with the dates proposed.
Is there a second? Mr. Stansell? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, Kemp, Lindner, and Bush.
If you wish to, I can go, just for the four.
One, two, three. For the four, I, yeah, I'm a favor.
You can tie in the possible field.
Motion carries. Mr. Stansell. Move on to item 5.5, which is the opposed agenda change.
Hi, Mrs. Fisher. I do apologize. Mrs. Buchanan and I now have a good system in place where she is typing the minutes, and then I'm going through with all my copious notes, and we did not start that until the first meeting in October. So we, so I did miss this, and we did notice it at arbitration the other evening. We had the motion to go into executive session, and we did not have the motion that you made when you came out of executive session in terms of ratifying the contract or approving the contract pending ratification by the administrators' union. So I would ask that you add this to the, and let's also note that Mr. Stansell had left the meeting at that point, so it's on page seven of the minutes, and I would ask that you approve that, and I promise you that our system has been working for two and a half months now, and so we will continue to that system. I apologize.
I have a question. This was a meeting on September 22nd, and unfortunately, Mrs. Russell was not with us that day. I do argue that she was in attendance that evening. Okay, I wasn't sure what the date was that you went to.
So I was making sure she was sworn in.
Okay, great, thank you. Sorry. All right, is there a motion to revise the minutes of September 22nd? Mr. Stansell.
I'd like to make a motion that the board approved a revised Board of Education meeting minutes dated September 22nd, 2014, to include the information in motion highlighted above.
Is there a second? Mr. Kemp? Any questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor? Janice, thank you very much. Okay, move on to item 6.2, for review and update of the Board of Education calendar. Anybody have anything on the calendar that they would address? Move 6.7, opportunity for questions from the press on agenda items. Last motion. Mr. Holt. Is there a second? Mr. Stansell. All those in favor? Janice, thank you. Have a very happy holiday in Virginia.